Good way known Brittany. Battle.
Okay.
Hey Commissioner Elamene, how are you today?
Yeah, pretty good. A little brain dead. I just got off a three hour long Zoom meeting with the qualifications board meeting from. I stumbled across a word, you know, that is my brain, not my heart.
I understand. It starts hitting my neck is what gets me as I sit trying to look at these things. I don't really know what else went on, but anyway. Glad to be here. Hey, Ms. Jones, how are you doing?
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing fine, doing fine. I ran across an article right like right after I saw this note. Where the Chronicle had named you Person of the Year and so I had to stop and read back through that, so.
You were trying to, you were investigating me. I was Woman of the Year thanks to the. Trying to figure out, you know, I do. So let you know that right now.
I ran across it. I really wasn't investigating you. It was just happenstance that I that I saw that at that time. So. Anyway, it was kind of neat to see that. Good stuff. So, yeah. Absolutely.
Those educators for you. See, they stand out in the community.
They do.
I may say so myself as a retired one, but we do make an imprint.
That's right. That's right.
How's your, your kind? Dudley, you doing okay? You good? No more problems and pains?
Well, yeah, physically I'm good. And actually, the company finally got back with me and so I'm making it through the the pain of those claims and everything, but they've accepted liability. So at least we're there anyway, which is good. Yeah, I'm still sore, but I'm okay.
All right. Look, I know time is very precious to everyone and it's 4:02. Ms. Russ is going to tell me what time it is in a minute to go ahead and get started. So I'm bored that, you know, whipping and go ahead and get started here. First, Ms. Jones, first, I want to thank you for contacting us for the meeting. I did read your PowerPoint diligently about two times, in fact. To make it clear, you know, what your concerns were. And after reading that, I said, we probably need to explain to you how the county budget process works. So you have that as a background too. And then we'll have a better scope of what's really going on when it comes to finances from the county perspective. And give you a chance also to ask questions, you know, your concerns. So hopefully that would be the format. And I want to thank our county manager, Phyllis Russell, for responding so quickly. Sort of a last thing. So I owe them both, you know, it's an apple or a pear or banana or something, you know. That said, let's take a minute and go around and just introduce ourselves. Ms. Jones, you want to start off please?
Sure. Thank you all for doing this. Thank you for having us. I am Miranda Jones, a teacher here in West Side County Schools. I am also one of the founding members of Hate Out of Winston. We are collaborating with a group called FC Park. For Side County Police Accountability and Relocation Coalition. And so we are comprised of many different activist groups here in Winston-Salem. And so our group has primarily gone to the city, but we know that TAP and others have been before the county. So this is new for Hate Out meeting with you all. Also, it'll be a learning experience for me, but I'm just glad to facilitate this and thank you for having us.
Phyllis, are you next up?
No, I can't tell the order, but.
Okay.
I'm Phyllis Russell. I am a budget and management analyst here with Forsyth County. I have several departments. I recently was given DSS. I've worked previously with state legislators and things like that. But, you know, glad to be here to bring some clarity in how we do things here at the county versus how they do things at the city. We two different entities.
Yes.
Okay, and I think after me would be Bailey.
Hey, I'm Bailey. I'm from Winston-Salem, but I just moved back after graduate school. So I just came back in March 2020. So I'm looking for a job now. So hopefully I'll be a teacher as well. And I'm with Triad Abolition Project in FC Park.
Next, we have, oh, Gillian.
Hi, my name is Gillian Seacres. I am a resident of Winston-Salem, originally from Pittsburgh, but by and large, I've spent the bulk of my life here in Winston. Project manager by trade and I am with Winston-Salem DSA as well as FC Park.
Okay. And yes, he is infamous, but maybe you all don't know Dudley Watts.
I think I was supposed to be famous. Infamous is bad. Right, 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 right. So yeah, I'm Dudley Watts, county manager. You've been here since 2006 in this role and prior to that was a manager in a smaller community in kind of north of Raleigh and Durham and Granville County. And then I was three years down in Pender County. So I've sort of worked my way west across the state. And in about three years, I actually got my start in the public sector working in housing. So I worked for a company that managed low and moderate income housing across. There were farmers home 515 projects at the time, kind of across the southeast. So that's what got my interest in local government. So. Anyway, glad, glad to be here.
Okay, and we have Commissioner Elamene.
Thank you very much. And I'll try to be brief for my introduction. This is my home. I grew up in Winston-Salem. Graduated from Anderson Junior Senior High School, the best high school in Winston-Salem until they closed us down. In 1970, in fact, we were the last class to graduate. And I threw out, you know, because some scholarships went to Cornell College and other places and lived across the country. Pursuing degrees and working and finally got back home. And before coming back home, I worked in New York as a banker for Chase Manhattan Bank as a loan officer. Did some other jobs across the country and we finally settled back in to allow my kids and other grandparents. And so all five of them are grown now. Now we have 13 grandkids. So we've come a long way. But we've been together since 1969 and she hasn't kicked my house but once in my whole life. So I feel pretty good about that. But in terms of county commissioner representation, I've represented you on about five or six different boards. I'll just name a few. I am the vice chair of our audit committee for the county. I serve on JCPC, Juvenile Justice Prevention Council. I'm the vice chair of Department of Social Services and DSS Consolidated Board. I'm one of the broader trustees for the library system and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One unique thing I want to share with you that I read from your PowerPoint, I work with a group called Northwest North Carolina Advocates with Disabilities. And that group qualifies people to receive benefits through working with SOAR programs. And so one of my former students, Fletcher Hunter, was directing that program for a while. And so I'm very familiar how the SOAR program works. And I think that will add to our discussion this evening. That's enough about me. All right? Little background. So I shared the PowerPoint, you know, with our county manager and with Phyllis, as you sent to me. Very thoroughly. And I noticed in reading it that a lot of the your concerns on that really are city concerns specifically. But I want you to understand how the county process works when it comes to budget and then allow you a chance to ask questions, you know, as we proceed. So at this point. I see some demands.
Yeah, I'm trying to share it with everybody.
Okay, all right.
That way they don't have to worry about it. We got it.
Okay, all right then. So we're going to hopefully give the distinguished people on this Zoom a chance to sort of share with you how we go about structuring the county budget. And then we're going to go into your specific demands from your presentation. If that's okay, Ms. Jones. Okay?
That is fine. I just want to say one quick thing. The city actually punts to you all. So I hope y'all don't punt back to the city when it comes to concerns. Mayor did say, y'all coming after us. Go after the county. They got all the money. So. We are here at their, from their advice. Let me just say that. Thank you.
Okay, so now we know the city is trying to get in our pocket. Now we see, now we.
Now we see the whole story, huh? Now we see the whole story. Okay. Well, Ms. Jones, since you have your PowerPoint up, we can go through that first. Then we'll talk about how the county budget works. We'll do it in that sequence. Okay?
Sure. So these are the groups that are a part of, well, y'all know that the groups that are part of.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, I was just saying, these are the groups that are part of the coalition. We are constantly adding more groups daily. So that's who this is comprised of. So our demands are, we would like to reallocate a portion from the Winston-Salem police, excuse me, Winston-Salem Police Department. From its budget to community services such as SOAR, youth bill. We'd like to have some forgivable loans for black businesses. We want to look at public transportation and increasing city minimum wage. We would also like the the creation of a civilian police oversight authority for the police department as well as the sheriff's department. And we want it to be a little bit, well, not just a little bit, a lot different from, I think it's what's called the Police Review Board that has been around since the eighties. We know that was started by some of the elders, maybe even some of the ancestors. So we want it to be a lot more effective than we believe it has been thus far. Our third request is, or demand, excuse me, is the in cash bail for Forsyth County, the demilitarization of the police department and the sheriff's office. And the creation of a mental health crisis intervention mobile unit. We recognize that Guilford County has done this. But we are very interested in the model out of Eugene, Oregon called Kahoots. Our goal with that is very simple. We are not looking to take police with trained mental health professionals. We are looking to send mental health professionals out to do what it is that they do best. So when we look at the $78 million police budget, these are, as I just mentioned, some of the key areas that we're asking. What we believe is a very small portion to go to, as has been done in other larger cities and cities of comparable sizes. So as I just stated, these are some of the cities that have kind of already set the precedence for doing this. Of course, Asheville is right up, you know, right up the street from us, proverbially speaking. Of course, Hartford, Connecticut, Norman. If my colleagues want to jump in here, definitely Bailey, Gillian, feel free to add to what I'm saying. So, you know, we know that cities like to see precedent. So we have been doing our research and kind of finding out where this is taking place. Some of this may have been expedited with the murder of George Floyd. It may have taken places in other, you know, other places before that, but these are the places that we're looking at. Somebody talked, I didn't know somebody had a question. So in terms of, so I don't need to like reread all of this to you all. But what we looked at was, we recognized that SOAR is a program that's offered here by the city. We believe it's impactful. We saw that they got a portion. I think it, I think it was of the $1 million that the city set aside. When we looked at this group, we said, this is a group that is really marginalized. A group that has multiple barriers. A million dollars is simply not enough. So we would like increased funding to go to towards SOAR. Youth Bill is, I'm a little biased here. Youth Bill kind of was at my unction as an educator who unfortunately I see young men and women who drop out despite all of the wraparound services, despite us kind of bringing in what we think are solutions. They simply drop out. I've, you know, taught quite a few gang members who said, look, you know, I can't do this school thing. And I recognize that some of them are already involved in criminal activity as a way to survive. So what I did was I started kind of researching Youth Bill. Because I had looked into it for students of mine. And when I contacted people at the city, I didn't get a response. And unfortunately, some of my students ended up dropping out and I would see their parents and, you know, they didn't always give me the best stories. And so I said, what can we do with this program? How can we reignite it? We do recognize that it was a nationally funded program. We lost funding because the graduation rate actually increased, but we know now is decreasing. So in my mind, as an educator, I said, you know, hey, we need to bring this up because there are children who just cannot do traditional school. And of course, in this climate, look at what's going on with schools now that we're in the midst of a pandemic. How can we reignite this? How can we get the city or in your case, the county to kind of put some funding behind this? Because what it will do is allow these young people the opportunity to get a GED. As well as get a viable career. All right, I'm gonna pass this one to Bailey because this is your area better than it is mine.
Right, thank you. So this, these slides are more geared towards the city. And this is something that we're still working on to implement at the county level as well. But as Miranda was saying, the current review board for WSPD just isn't something that's successful in terms of community input. So we're looking at different models to project, to present that would actually give input from the, from the community. And ensure that community, community, sorry, community review boards. For issues or complaints that are made against police or deputies would actually be addressed by people who aren't biased by those programs. So for instance, with WSPD, the people who actually address those complaints are the police chief as well as the city manager. And so this slide kind of goes over that a bit more in detail, just kind of giving a visual of really emphasizing that these kind of review boards would be more transparent to the community and let people know what's going on with the investigation step by step. And we can skip this one because it's WSPD. And this slide shows that the programming that we are modeling this after is from Fayetteville Pact, which is a similar coalition to ours. As well as a national association for civilian oversight of law enforcement. So it's been practiced across or it's being pitched across the nation and something that has a strategy and outline that comes with it as well. And Gillian, could you take cash bail?
Sorry about that. I was sitting on mute. My apologies. So there is no evidence that you need money to get people back to court. So it's irrational. Essentially, what we've been doing is criminalizing poverty within the capacity of cash bail. Because there are low level offenders that are unable to actually get out of prison on really low bonds. So actually, the Forsyth County Community Bail Fund, who has been working with FC Park and Coalition, has been bailing folks out on bills as low as $150. So we know that three out of five people in US jails today have not been convicted of a crime. And the court does determine an amount of money that a person has to pay for their release. So 433%. That was the increase in the use of pretrial detention between 1970 and 2015. And we do know that the violence of cash bail, there is an impact. It criminalizes poverty and it disproportionately affects both black and brown communities. It perpetuates vicious cycles of arrest and incarceration and robs folks of housing, jobs, and maybe even their children. Because there's times if you can't work, you can't pay the rent. If you can't pay the rent, then you're out. And then some, a lot of times, if you're unable to actually care for your children, they will be taken from you, also causing a backlog within our DSS system.
Okay, and I can talk a bit about demilitarization of FCSO. So this is really looking at what comes to the county commissioner board in general meetings. As well as briefings of going over like grants that review things such as the Real Time Crime Center or Real Time Intelligence Center. As well as grants that shift funding to FCSO for different surveillance type programming or militarized pieces that are purchased. And that includes more canines, which is something that came up last week, a $34,000 dog. But I know that also these grants are coming from the state level as well as the federal level. So it's a little bit different. It's not as specific to the actual county budget. So that's something that we're also prepared to speak about as well. We could go to the next slide. And this slide just shows some of the studies that we are referencing when we talk about militarization. We do include surveillance as a form of militarization since surveillance is something that is or has been really stimulated across the nation since 9/11. So it's something that started nationally, but has come to individual counties and cities.
So let me ask a question. Do, is it your opinion, I mean, I, you know, I've worked for lots of jurisdictions or other jurisdictions and, and so they you know, I would place every place I've been on some of the scale, you know, around capacity and even mindset within departments around militarization. Some, most of the time, and I think this is true for organizations in general, they take on the persona of whoever their leader is. So if you get, you know, a military leader, you know, then, then that's, you sort of get that mindset and is it your opinion? And maybe I, with Salm PD or the sheriff, that we are on the continual of militarized. Where you are depends on how far you got to go with this kind of initiative. Do you think we are militarized? And have y'all thought of it in those terms, I guess? Is that, or are we on the, do you see us as extremely militarized? Or, or more community police oriented or somewhere in the middle or?
That's a really good question. I hadn't thought about a militarization scale for this specific area. I think what we're really looking at is when these grants are adopted by FCSO, which are often interlocal agreement with WSPD. It actually expands policing. So for example, with the Real Time Crime Center, it has resulted in more funding going into paying employees to then be present at the Real Time Crime Center. And so we'll see the budget continue to increase to meet the needs of the grants that are being agreed to. So militarization, it includes surveillance as well as like weapons and defense mechanisms. But it also includes for us, the specifics of increasing the budget over time, which in the county budget, it does show that FCSO's budget continues to increase for the projected 10 years, which is actually like, I would say too, like the budget is so thorough for the county, which has been really helpful for us to understand spending, not just in the, in the state of, or for policing and stuff. It's for everything.
Yeah. So I guess I would, I'd encourage you to, well, I mean, I can make the argument that something like Real Time Crime Center, because that actually takes dollars away from officers on the street to some extent. And I've had this conversation with Sheriff Kimbrough and with Chief Deputy Rocky Joyner as well. It, you actually are kind of diverting funds in more of a you know, you're, you're, you're watching kind of more of what's going on rather than having, you know, the police presence there. And you can argue that's good or bad. I guess what I would say to you is just my experience here. So I worked, you know, for 12 years or so with Sheriff Schatzman. And then, and now Sheriff Kimbrough and, and, you know, they, they both came from FBI kind of federal stuff. But clearly, Sheriff Schatzman was a Marine and then he, you know, he you know, did the, the field officer piece with, with the FBI. And I mean, I would, I guess I'd argue that Sheriff Kimbrough has been more and even, I mean, obviously Katrina Thompson, both of them are probably, in my opinion, more poised towards community policing and, and sort of the soft relationship piece of it. I mean, then we're better positioned now, if that's where you want the department to go than we've ever been. It's my opinion, but I mean, in fact, you could get more of the hardcore police guys would say the sheriff's diverted a lot of dollars into, because he has, he's diverted dollars into this outreach piece, to this production thing that he does, that to the Arctic. Just to more relationship kind of stuff. And so I guess, I guess I'm a little confused by this one, just because my sense is he's doing exactly what your groups would want him to do.
No, not exactly. It's, and I think this is something that we're really doing a lot of work on our end to help educate what we mean by reducing funding or divesting from policing and putting those funds into other programs. What we're seeing nationwide as well as locally is a trend towards expanding policing and that includes community policing as well as the production and relationship building work. It's still policing and it's still getting funds that could be going to programming that would actually reduce poverty. Which we really need is Forsyth County has a very high poverty rate. We also have a high crime rate. And it's not really going down with the increased policing. So we do have work on our end to make sure that that message gets across and is understood that like, we're not looking for more community policing. We're actually looking for actual divestment from policing as a whole.
So is it a zero, I mean, is it assuming there's a zero sum and that you have to reduce this to raise that? Or is it? I mean, that would be my question. I mean, because they are not necessarily zero sum games. You could get more money for you know, for, for programs and still have you know, pretty good police response.
Right. And so I think this comes back to how we're drawing attention to the Kahoots model as well. Because we do know that a lot of the dispatch calls are going to welfare checks or mental health checks. And so we're really looking for ways of divesting from police into programming that would actually address these emergency calls with appropriate people. And not bring guns to spaces where we know that police brutality could act or use of force, let's put it that way. Like, or lack of de-escalation tactics would actually increase the issues of the situation and not provide the care that's needed. So it's a, it's not really a zero sum situation. It's a situation of really looking at like how we can look at this long term. And not trying to like disrupt a community all at once, but actually like work together to see like how we can provide care oriented services instead of police in some situations.
Have y'all ever done police ride alongs?
No.
Okay, I encourage you to do a police ride along and then you will decide for yourself if you think somebody's going to go into a situation without police presence initially. And I strongly encourage you to do that. And Katrina can take you to do that. And it's, it was probably the thing that changed my opinion more than anything else in my entire career.
Commissioner Watts, I just wanted to add something if I might. One of the things that we, that we definitely don't want to do in this work is we don't want to take money from groups that are already marginalized and oppressed. So for instance, it was suggested to us in terms of the city that we look at the Parks and Rec budget. I feel like as a lifelong resident African American of the city, to take money from Parks and Rec would disproportionately affect my community. So we're not looking to take money from there to put towards the programs when we have what we think is an inflated police budget. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Right. I appreciate that. And I mean, it is, you know, you do have to look at it and say, okay, do we feel safe and comfortable with our current level of police, policing? And if, you know, if you do, great. If you don't, then that's a different issue. And you know, since we serve, the sheriff's department serves the unincorporated areas. And then eight municipalities, seven municipalities that don't have police departments as part of it. You know, I can tell you across those seven communities, there's, you know, some, some folks feel like they need more, some folks feel like they need less. You know, it's just, it's, it's kind of across the board there. But that is helpful and I appreciate it. I didn't mean to interject too much in, but anyway, I'll, I'll be quiet.
And but I also want to say in terms of ride along, that is, that is commonly suggested to us. As an African American woman, thankfully, I've never had a negative encounter with the police. That has not been my story. But I don't know that I would feel safe riding with the police anywhere as we continue to see what happens when folks are African American and have to deal with the police. I don't know that that's a good idea for me. I understand why folks are suggesting it, but I don't know that it's, that is, that is a great idea.
It's the scariest thing I've ever done in my entire life.
Let me add 30 seconds to this and then I'll go back to the presentation. You know, I've lived in Chicago when I first started my career and New York and some other major cities around the country. And the concept of militarization here compared to those major cities is minuscule. And I'll give you some specifics. You know, I worked on the ground quite a bit with Mayor Daley in Chicago. He had this thing from block to block. And I worked in New York with a group and it was called the Broken Glass. I mean, anything that happened to the community, any minor thing, they threw people against the wall, they searched them. It ended up being a legal search. But initially, it was brutal. But initially, it was brutal primarily black people and brown people, intense militarization, not accepting what they called any crack window. Those to me were very extreme applications of police force in the community, period. And Winston-Salem compared to that, as I said, it's like apples and oranges. So I don't think we can put Winston-Salem in the same venue as those kind of major cities. We've had some issues. I worked with the Deborah Sykes case. I was one of those old people you referred to earlier that established the Community Police Review Board. We marched Emmanuel Baptist Church downtown to get it started because of what happened to Daryl Hunt. But it didn't have authority to really do subpoenas, and that caused a big problem inside of the structure of it. But there have been some open doors here, and I can go back to Chief Davis and other sheriffs that we didn't have in other communities. So, so I'm saying to sort of put things in a context, there's always room for improvement, but you have to give a little bit of credit for those things that have worked very positively. And I've been on that ride, and it is an eye opener. Even in Winston-Salem, they call university city class or something like that. Gives you a better idea of how the city really works. We don't have it in the county, but wouldn't be a bad idea to have a county university. So you have a real set of how, how things actually work versus how we perceive them to work. It's a big difference sometimes. Now, I'm gonna pause there because I want you to get a chance to finish the presentation and we can have some detailed discussion afterwards. And I apologize for taking too much of your time.
Commissioner, y'all would let me on the, the University of Winston-Salem, I got denied. So let me, I did try.
I had, that's not my, that's not my perfume.
And you know, and, and y'all wouldn't let me on the, uh, library committee you're on either. So I'm just like.
The library trustee board?
Yes, sir, I tried and I got declined. Something happens when you become an activist in the city, you can't get on anything. So I did try most of those. And I, the only thing I got on was the, the, uh, community, uh, grant funding proposal committee or whatever, C A A C for the city. Everything else y'all wouldn't let me on. So comrades, remember that. We cannot get on stuff. I'm just saying.
Don't give up. The sun is still shining every day. All right, I'm gonna get out of that conversation. Let's move on. Okay.
I think we can jump past this slide as well. Yeah, let's.
Baby, we can move past this slide.
Yeah, sorry, I think I was on mute. Great. Does anyone want to take on the cahoots?
I'm sure, actually, this, this, um, was actually introduced to us by Mayor Pro Tim Didi Adams, who was impressed with what is going on in Greensboro and what they've been doing to respond to mental health crises there. I think she seemed to suggest that this is probably the thing that, uh, folks will get on board with and would actually vote for. So Celine Johnson, who's not here with us, um, who has, uh, extensive, um, background in mental health as well as developmental disabilities, she had been looking at, um, the benefit from, of having someone who, to go out, who was versed in, um, mental health issues to deal with some of the individuals as opposed to sending out the police. And what we found was that there's a lot of research that basically suggests that police actually escalate situations. They don't de-escalate. And one of the things that we don't want is we don't want to criminalize those that are, um, that, that are suffering from any kind of, uh, uh, mental health disability. So for instance, one of the things we have on here is in the U.S., individuals with severe mental illness, I want to add, that could also include, include chronic and persistent mental illness, generate no less than one in 10 calls for police services, and occupy at least one in five America's prison and jail beds. So we want, we want our city and our county to be super progressive and looking at, are we, are we, are we criminalizing these folks who actually need treatment and don't need to be incarcerated? Or kind of come in contact with the police in a negative manner because that person, he or she is not trained to deal with mental health. As an educator, I know very well that there are individuals with autism, who if you don't understand autism, you don't understand some of the things that kind of go along with that diagnosis, you may perceive it as aggression. It may be misunderstood. And there have actually been actual cases where individuals have been killed. Thankfully, not in our city, but you know, we don't like that it happened anywhere, uh, because they actually were tased or they had autism and the officer did not know that he or she was looking at autism as opposed to thinking that it was somebody that was, you know, kind of doing something, um, criminal. Uh, in the work that we do, we see individuals in the city, uh, who went out this past summer during the height of all of the protests, and that was an individual who just the naked eye could tell was having a mental health crisis, but the police were called, right? I will give credit to the police. It was handled well. I cannot say that what I witnessed was abusive or brutality, but I did have to wonder what that would look like if someone was trying to deal with that. These were some individuals that were near, um, to give you the idea of the area, Crystal Towers. So what would that look like to have someone who has that training deal with it as opposed to bringing it out for these who very well could be called to something that really is criminal? Even though we know they're going after this happen usually. So that's kind of the thoughts here, so that is why we, you know, created this slide.
Yeah, and I, we actually have that program in place. Um, uh, we've got a mobile integrated health, um, system in place. We've had it for a couple of years and it's, and it's geared toward behavioral health. And, um, there, there's really three things happening. There's all these efforts to try to get, um, to get law enforcement officers the CIT training. And so that's been going on for 10 or 15 years. Five or six years ago, we started Mobile Integrated Health Unit, and then Daymark runs a Behavioral Health Crisis, uh, 24-hour system that was not doing everything it should do. And that's really when we did, when we created M I H. And so M I H is a paramedic who responds to calls. And so if a law enforcement officer is, um, dealing with somebody and they believe is really, it's really a mental health crisis and it's not a criminal thing, Mobile Integrated Health has somebody 24/7 can show up, um, and, and work through that and actually has the ability to take them to the Behavioral Health, uh, Crisis Center. And so I would love for, um, uh, the guy who runs that, um, to, to sit down with y'all, y'all and just say, you know, here's what we're doing. What you will hear from him is he is eager to figure out how he can, how he can be in his group. It's about eight paramedics can be even more effective. And so, um, we, we kind of have that program in place, actually. It needs to be looked at, you know, we need to make sure it's doing what, I, I would love for it to have the scrutiny of, of, of you guys to, um, tell us if you think it's doing what it should be doing.
And, and one of the things that I, I wanted to add was that what we know as a DIS model, particularly the cahoots model, is a cost-saving model. So when we presented to the Public Safety Committee, they were super interested in that part, um, and seeing what it would actually do for the city. Um, and of course, hopefully you all will be that way towards the county. So that, that's what we know, um, already, even because a lot of what we're proposing, we know that the, the data is actually being collected now, it's ongoing because, you know, this is something new. This model is new for a lot of cities. And so we included what Chief Thompson said herself, because we want to hold her to these words when she said, we're expecting we being police officers, we're expecting to be everything. Teachers, babysitters, healthcare workers, mental health providers, oh, and by the way, handling crime as well. I just want to reallocate our funding into these programs or into those people, organizations that can provide those things. We completely agree with her on that. She sits on a board of ABC, I think it's ABC of Northwest North Carolina, who one of the members, Celine, is the executive director. And so we're trying to figure out how we make this happen in light of this statement, because this is something that we very clearly agree on.
I think it exists, it may need to be, um, it obviously needs to be, um, we need to get more of the word out, but, um, I think if you ask any police officer, if the counties, um, and it runs through our Emergency Services Department, if, if the mobile integrated health program has been effective, I think they would, they would tell you very quickly it, it, um, you know, it absolutely has. In the old days, if you saw somebody who was sleeping on a park bench or whatever, and maybe they were, you know, maybe they were an alcoholic or whatever, and, and, um, you know, there really wasn't much you could do. And the really only thing law enforcement could do is, is take that person in if they chose to do that. Um, you know, now we can send a mobile integrated health paramedic. Paramedic can take them to a behavioral urgent care center that's over on Highland Avenue. They can, it's 24-hour, 23-hour facility, they can dry out. And then they can, you know, they may go back to drink or drugs or whatever, but they've, they've had a chance to dry out somewhere other than a park bench, um, or jail. Um, and so, uh, and I can tell you, because we run the numbers, um, it has saved a bunch of money and has been a much better situation. And I would love for, um, for the, for the guy that runs that to, to kind of interact with you guys. He could probably get some ideas, um, about how to be more effective. His biggest problem they had when we started it up is very quickly he realized that his guys, instead of being paramedic medical people, they really need, they were, they needed the resource referral piece. They needed to understand the systems that are kind of behind the mental health and behavioral health world. And they did, and so those guys, they, they were an amazing thing. And I thank, thank the county commissioners for funding it as a pilot and then continuing it. Um, but we do need to get the word out better. I would certainly say that.
To add to Dudley's point, um, in FY19, um, we put 524,000, almost 525,000 dollars in the program. Um, and now for 21, uh, 731,000. It's been just for the mobile unit. So this is something, even when the estimates are down, the county commissioners still have been increasing the funding for, um, the mobile unit.
And Miranda, as a person, Andy Hagler, who sort of runs the mental health component, I'm on his committee as well. And Brent Musinger gave a presentation, that's the gentleman that, uh, that was referring to, who runs that program. Uh, he had one example of how he was able to deal with one client who had some mental issues. And he went to him three different times. He finally got him the help that he needed to make a difference in his life, a quantitative difference. But he said he had estimated that the time they were using with him would have cost about 420,000 dollars at one person because of the issues he was dealing with. So this is a very effective program. I would highly recommend that if you have not touched base with Andy Hagler, do so. And he'll give you a chance to touch base with Brett Musinger, who's an excellent person. He's really dedicated to helping people. I'm gonna stop there and let you do the cahoots. So I didn't mean to take up a lot of your time. Go ahead.
Good things about Andy, um, and kind of the work that he does from a former sociologist here. So again, I mentioned the program from, um, Cahoots, which is out of Eugene, Oregon. It is funded by the city. Uh, the annual program budget is 2.1 million. And so in 2017, the Cahoots team answered 17% of the Eugene Police Department's overall call volume. Again, we really like this model. We want to decrease, uh, the police presence and kind of put this in the hand of folks who, um, who do this work best. There's a little bit more, um, data in terms of the diversion savings per year, um, in this model, which you know stands for crisis, crisis assistance, housing, um, out on the streets. And so this is the program that we are most, um, in favor of.
System on silent, please, so we can, it's a little background noise. Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. Let, let's take a few minutes to sort of explain how the county's budget system operates, how it was put together, um, to give you sort of a bigger picture too, of what we're dealing with as county commissioners and as, you know, people responsible for the county budget. We don't have a lot of time left, but I'm gonna go ahead and get started with, uh, my friend who's operating everything for us here. Phyllis, do you mind just describing overall the components of the county budget and how concentrated areas of expenses and that kind of thing? And then we'll let that be a big picture.
Okay, right now, um, as a matter of fact, we're in the middle of budget season. February 5th, from the departments, we will be receiving the expenditures, the anticipated expenditures and revenues for FY22. So it is now January 2021. By July 1st, um, of this year, we will have the 22 budget in place. So what is going on now is we are now doing pretty much a kind of three to five-year analysis of the spending and the revenues have been coming in. If, um, we're looking at public health or DSS, we're receiving the contracts or the agreement addenda from the states, um, from the feds telling us how much money revenue to anticipate coming in, in regards to the, um, department requests. Once we get them in, uh, in February, we then, I believe it's February 25th, am I right Dudley? The winter work session.
That sounds right.
Okay, and winter work session is when the commissioners come together and pretty much are telling us their priorities, what programs from the initial, um, um, requests that we as the budget office and, uh, because technically the budget doesn't belong to the budget office. It belongs to Dudley until he hands it over to the commissioners. So what he's doing is they're telling Dudley, okay, make sure that this program is being given priority. Make sure that the, um, departments have what they need in regards to this, this, and this. These are initiatives or legislative, um, um, things that have come down. And so this is where money needs to be shifted. Um, those things, discussions happen by the end of February. When March comes in, March to about maybe the first, second week in April, we then are meeting one-on-one with each and every department. And every department also includes, um, the schools, you know, Forsyth Tech, Winston-Salem, um, Forsyth County Schools, public schools. We're meeting with everybody and everything that the county gives money to. Um, then we're coming back again, presenting the preliminary budget, and the commissioners are meeting again afterwards. You know, they're meeting, we're giving the budget. Dudley tells us again, change this, put money there, take money that, we're moving things around. But then we go into the final stage, which is we've made all the changes, but we still go before the commissioners and we present to the public budget and then also to the commissioners for them to vote on it in early June. They, along with, um, you know, the staff are looking at every line. We don't look at just the department, we look, go down to the line spending level. So we know how much everybody's paying for paper clips. We know how much you are paying for training. We know how much is coming in for COVID, what they spend on COVID. We are looking at every line. But we're also receiving requests from the community. Um, those tend to be alternative service level requests, because we tend to put them all together, or special appropriations, sometimes they're called. We're looking at capital improvement, where we can improve the building facilities that the public comes into so that we can service them. But those areas that, um, the commissioners are telling us, this is where we want the money to go and this is how it needs to be managed, that's what we're doing now. Now, in regards to public safety, um, not just EMS and things like that, but in regards to the sheriff's budget, the only thing we control with the sheriff's budget is we say, here, you have $12. He says, he, thank you, and puts the $12 where he wants it to go. So that is kind of how we work with the sheriff, because he's an elected official. So that's the same thing with him, the register of deeds. We just give them the money, because we're the county and the tax dollars come into us, and so we just give them their little bag. When it comes to, um, things at the court, we do give the courts money, but we give the courts money for, I believe, um, space. We give them court's money for Saigon Seven, which is the domestic violence. And it's one other thing, I can't remember right now, Dudley.
Deferred payment.
Deferred payment, thank you. Look at that, see? Deferred payment. When it comes to bail and cash bonds, things like that, that's the DA and the judges. The sheriff really doesn't have any control over that. He kind of just says, oh, did they pay? All right, let them go. If they didn't pay, all right, here, here go your jumpsuit, and he sends them back to jail. So it's not like certain things, I know the perception is the county tells them what to do, but technically the county commissioners are not the sheriff's bosses. The county commissioners are the dad you come to and say, can I have $20? That's what they are. They're, they're the people who have been charged, given charge to collect the, um, the taxes and say, okay, this is who gets the tax money, because they've been elected by the people to make that decision. Um, okay, so I know I said a whole bunch of stuff and tried to cram in the 15,000 things that we do in the next four months. Um, but anything, any questions y'all got about that process? Okay, whoa, let me unmute everybody. I'm sorry. Okay, so now it's so that you can unmute yourself.
So Dudley, would you give the big picture of what our statutory obligations are as a county government in terms of funding?
Yeah, I'll be glad to, and I'll try to be quick. Um, uh, and, and maybe what I can do, Commissioner Lomine, is, is really, the, to my knowledge, what I saw was they kind of threw five initiatives out, and I can maybe give some direction on where the county would be involved with these five initiatives, um, and then what the other ones are. So, you know, in terms of something, you know, if, if, if there is a program that, that has a human services element to it, a courts element to it, um, an education element to it, that, that, that you guys are interested in, like the cahoots program, there's a process to, to ask the county commissioners to fund that. Um, recently, the board took action to more formalize that, so there's that, actually an application form. And, um, and Phil's can help you with that and help. can help you with that and help getting that in in time and all that kind of stuff. Um, and it'll be helpful to know, and I appreciate the comment about how transparent the county budget is. Um, you can look and see other things that we do as well, um, and and sort of sort through how how a proposed program would fit with that. So programs we can help with. The city has a similar arrangement where they do the same kind of thing. And um, and and we understand that. Um, the civilian police oversight in the, in my world, since Phil's time to talk a little bit about the sheriff, um, the county commissioners do actually determine how many positions, law enforcement positions they have funded. So it's a little more than just here's twenty bucks. It's it's um, and and people is really their biggest piece of that puzzle. Um, so civilian police oversight, because of the sheriff's thing, you really got to work that through him. But as an elected official, you know, uh, you've got a different uh, arrangement with that. But it doesn't make any sense to talk to county commissioners about a civilian police oversight thing because they don't, we couldn't tell the sheriff to do it anyway. So, um, the in cash bail uh, uh, piece is legislative. There's nothing the county commissioners decide about cash bail. Our responsibilities for um, court programs are we basically have to provide the courthouse. And we've got a statutory responsibility to do that. And we're getting ready to, we're getting ready to start construction on a new courthouse, which should be safer for prisoners, safer for the general public and safer for the workers. And so it will be much more efficient. So while it's a pile of money and I got that, um, I don't like the idea that we're spending a bunch of money on a courthouse, but statutorily, that is our responsibility. And the commissioners took that seriously and are off and running with it. The demilitarized piece, I think I talked enough about. I'm not gonna say too much about that. I think it would be helpful to look and see, um, I I I got where you guys are. I think you just believe that we're spending too much on police and want to spend much more on other programs. Um, and I, and I understand and and got that. Um, I do think it would be helpful to put in context in communities you're working in, kind of from whence we start. Um, because I think everybody wants to live in a safe place. And if you need a police officer, you want that officer there in a couple of minutes. Um, everybody wants that. And so, but that is a function, there's a formula for that. And what I can tell you on the sheriff's side of things, because some of the municipalities like Clemmons and Kernersville and um, particularly Clemmons and Kernersville have grown so much, uh, in Lewisville, they have, they do not have enough law enforcement officers. And I can show you that they, they just don't. But it's an urban area. They need to be paying for the more like city police. And so there's this constant kind of issue that I've got to deal with on what's the base level of policing across the county? Uh, and what's the, what's the um, uh, you know, what's the, what's the police demand in the areas? You know, generally where I live out in the country, you know, I mean, not many people live there, so not many people do bad things. So you don't get many calls. But if I call for an officer, I'm going to, um, I'm gonna wait because I live out in the country. And so it's gonna take fifteen, twenty minutes um, uh, for an officer to get out there in downtown Winston. It takes about two minutes. And so, um, you know, whether that's right, wrong, it's, you know, it's a function of how a community looks at how safe it is. And then the last one is the mobile health, mental health stuff. I can tell you, we are game on and you, the the last, that bottom one, and really anything associated with um, with behavioral health, substance abuse, um, and uh, in ADD, which is developmental disability piece, which is not as relevant. But um, uh, you know, that is sort of the county commissioners' world. There's a state uh, way it's funded. Um, we, we have a lot of discretion over local dollars around that. And so the board spends a lot of time with that. And that's an area where we can be unbelievably creative. And I would challenge you guys to um, learn about what we're doing. And I got people who can, can give you a quick study on that and then help us figure out. Cause if there's something that somebody's doing that we're not, that's working, by gosh, we ought to do it. And the commissioners have dollars available to do those kinds of projects. And I think with the opioid epidemic, there'll be a settlement. We were, we engaged in that lawsuit. There will be more dollars to deal with um, substance abuse issues in the future. And so I think communities that are, we need to be thinking about how those dollars can be used to make our communities safer.
May I step in for just a moment? Um, Mr. Watts? Uh, I just had a quick question because it seemed as if you were referring to both Clemmons and Lewisville. Now, I know that those are two, like, they're not zoned as cities, correct? But they're essentially like, I think Clemmons is classed as a village. I'm not sure if Lewisville is either. So they don't have their own actual police departments. The county is, is doing all responses for those areas, which are actually pretty more highly affluent. Well, that's, that's, that's interesting.
Yeah. So what happens is in North Car- they are incorporated. So they are an incorporated municipality with um, you know, with, with elected representation. But in North Carolina, you can be a defensive, you can, you can incorporate because you don't want to be Winston. And there's pretty, um, the General Assembly decides uh, what you have to do or what you can do. But yeah, so, so what you can end up with is you can end up with a Clemmons or Lewisville that ends up to have a population center that's about the size of Kernersville, for example. Um, and it, you know, in, 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 in crime and all that kind of stuff, you know, when people start living in higher density areas is when you need police departments. Um, and so right now, what those two communities do is that we have to provide them law enforcement services because they, they don't, there's no compelling requirement for them to provide those services themselves. What they do is they actually buy up the level of service because they do recognize they need better care and better coverage. And so they buy community police officers from the sheriff. Um, but it, but what I guess I'm saying to you is, and I would say to them, it's not enough. Um, it's absolutely, you know, they absolutely need what they're buying up off the county base level. Um, and I got a report that can kind of show that, um, because we look at it every year and those kinds of things. But it's, it's just a complexity. And, you know, um, at some point in time, Lewisville and Clemmons will get more like Kernersville, which has a full-service police force. It is expensive and it is why the tax rate in Kernersville is about fifty cents. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but that's close. And the, and the tax rate in Clemmons is like eleven cents and the tax rate in Lewisville's like eight cents or something. I mean, there's, they're, they are not full-service municipalities. And there's no uh, state legislative framework really that requires them to go into policing, but they should because it's very, it, what it does is it just challenges the sheriff in, in significant ways about how to, how to deliver services.
Just with, with our population densities and everything, I find that very interesting. I know that, again, those are extremely uh, affluent areas if you place the county up, especially, you know, with the qual- quote unquote qualities of school that are in those areas. So I find it interesting that they aren't subsidizing their own police force and that's falling onto the purview of the county.
Yeah, that it's, it's, it's an issue. And ironically, they're affluent, but look at their low tax rates compared to Winston and Kernersville.
Yeah, you have plenty of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses in that area. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Every year we have discussion. The commissioner, powwow about that every year.
And that's a state legislative framework issue you'd have to sort through. That's something to talk about. I mean, that is a state legislative framework and it's hard to get at. Um, and it's a chicken, it's sort of a play chicken because on one hand, the county commissioners um, want to keep, um, you know, they don't want, they don't want to tax everybody for Lewisville and Clemmons cops. Um, and that's absolutely understandable. Um, so it, um, it's the reason why, like Charlotte Mecklenburg went to a, um, you can, they, they have a, a, um, uh, county police force that's funded differently. And someday we're gonna get to that. I'd be, I don't want to tie things up. Um, I'd be happy to talk through the policy piece of that because it is absolutely fascinating.
Yeah. And especially too with the, the way that the districts kind of are drawn even to vote on county commissioner. They kind of get a little edge up on some representation. So it's interesting that they have a lower tax rate and that they have a little bit more of a visible representation. That's slightly problematic, especially whenever people in Winston-Salem are not having their voices, you know, heard because of those suburbs.
Yeah.
But I would love to talk to you about that, uh, Mr. Watts.
Yeah. Call me Dudley in any time.
I have a quick question. If, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here. If the, the county funds the school system, right? And we recognize that there's a portion of students that are not being successful, who are highly at risk for a lot of different things. What is it that the county can do to address that? Hence the recommendation for youth bill. Because um, as an educator, and I know Commissioner Elamine was as well, was always an educator, um, well, you are not reaching a segment of the population, which are largely our African-American and Latinx population, with the traditional school uh, methods, methodologies, especially in light of the pandemic. Then what is it that the county can do to actually get those students who may very quickly fall into crime or, you know, what have you, who are, we see in our numbers of poverty? What is it that the county is actually able to do since we know that you're already funding money towards the traditional method, which we know is problematic?
Let me give that a shot, Dudley, and I'll let you wrap it up. Forsyth County. Yes. Forsyth County is very unique, Miranda, in that we actually dedicate forty percent of our budget to public education, specifically the school system. Now, that is very unique in North Carolina. But along with that, we are in the position of saying, listen, you get twelve dollars once a time on Forsyth County school system because we think you need it. Don't come to us for any more money. And this is our expectations, but it's your job to make the policies on how to spend it. And we can hold them accountable when they come back to us for money. For example, there's always a bond to build a new school, right? Sometimes too often. So whenever Daryl Walker comes before me as a county commissioner, I want to say, Daryl, how much diversity you have in allocating these bonds to unutilized companies? Show me some, you know, participation. So from that perspective, as county commissioners, we can put pressure on them to spend dollars in a certain way. But the school board itself, as a separate entity, the charge is really on them to spend the amount of coordination to deal with students. I had students, I retired with ten years ago, but my last year at Glenn, they gave me twelve students that no one else wanted to teach. Some of those students today are ministers in Forsyth County. I want to identify them. Some became very, they're very popular in the community. They've done very well. But they want to classify them as all kind of alphabet suits. But my position was every child is born from grace. You should see that child as a gift, first of all, who has untold talents. You just got to open up that box and let them express those talents. But when we put pressure on the school system, I'll give another example. I'll, I'll be quiet. We have this group called CARE, uh, um, that's the name for that whole group. They basically go around and identify those students that didn't sign on when they should have for the school work.
The CARE teams, the CARE teams.
CARE team. Thank you very much. And so when they first came on board, they did it through, I call temporary funds. But I got a commitment from our interim superintendent that that kind of work needs to be continued on a permanent basis because of the work they're doing in the community. They're knocking on doors. They're talking to parents. They're making sure those students are engaged. It's that kind of additional outreach we need in the community to be effective educators. It just doesn't happen in a school house. And I used to move our PTA meetings from Glenn down to Emmanuel Baptist Church and other places to get them out of the school and get them closer to the community. And I would match up basketball players from Glenn to students up in Kernersville once a week to read to them. So you got to have a community relationship to make a difference in a child's life. It just can't be the four walls, as you well know, Miranda, how that works. But that's our position in terms of commissioners. We can put pressure to wreck them, but their responsibility is actually spending the money. And we can, you know, check them when they come back before us again for, for additional money. And that's our influence for the most part over there in a simple format. But listen, I know that we dedicated an hour. I know we just got started. But I hope you can see that my position is that transparency in government decisions is a birthright of every citizen. I'm gonna say it again. Transparency in government decisions is a birthright of every citizen in a democracy. So there's nothing to counter that we do that you don't have access to. Don't ever think that you can't ask us questions and um, contact us on any level that you need to, to make sure you understand what we're doing. We may not agree, but we can always agree to disagree and be civil with each other. And that's my final comment. Uh, I, I like to respect people's time. Uh, Ms. Jones, I want to thank you for contacting me. You wanted to have a one-on-one with me, but I thought it would be better to have some other team members on the team. So again, I thank uh, Phyllis and Dudley for showing up. And I hope we were helpful and give you more information you can use in your programs going forward.
Um, before we close out, I want to make sure if there are any deliverables that you guys need. Um, like reports or something that you want me to gather to send to you guys that you want to review? Um, or even contact people, I want, you want me to find so I can send you the names and you all, you know, start stalking them.
Yeah. That's what we do. If you could send us the video for today, we're gonna put this up on our social media platform. Uh, if you have it transcribed, that would be great. Um, just so you know, we'll make some slides. We'll include that very last quote from you, Commissioner Elamine. So uh, video, audio is great. Uh, Bailey, anything else you think we might need?
Um, aside from that, the deliverables that I would be really interested in are like any data that's um, associated with MIH. Um, as well.
The mobile, the mobile unit.
Yes. Uh, since that seems like really applicable with one of the demands that we're pushing. Um, and any updates or information on the process of the contract for the healthcare provider in the jail? Um, I think this has been something that advocates have been talking about for quite a time, um, is not wanting to see well path continue at the jail. Um, and we did just find out that the outbreak in the jail is now the biggest in the state. Um, so this is definitely on our minds. It's very present.
Yeah. So, um, and I would, I would appreciate you guys looking at our, um, our, the program that, that Phil's mentioned about that, um, uh, diversion, um, the deferred payment coordinator. Because we've always had some questions about that. But the purpose of that funded position, it's funded by the county. It's not mandated by the state, but it's funded. And I think it's in the clerk of courts office. But that position is actually charged with making sure that people who are in jail and um, and the bond is an issue is addressed. That thing's been around since Susan Frye a long time ago when she was clerk, actually even before she was clerk, um, when she was just working there. And so if the position's not doing what you think it needs to do, um, let us know because maybe there's a better way to spend that money. But it is, it's been here a long time and it is geared toward exactly what you want to have happen, which is bail, it really deals with that third bullet that you had. Um, so, um, jail medical, um, I think it closes Friday. There'll be a panel that we'll put together that, um, uh, that will review that. Um, and then there'll be a recommendation to the county commissioners. Um, and all, and, and, and the work will be, you know, the, the presentation to county commissioners will, will be transparent. I don't have a problem. Uh, I can't really get it to you before I get it to the county commissioners, but I'll get it to you doggone quick. Maybe same that morning, I'll give it to you before I give it to them or whatever. But, um, uh, the commissioners wouldn't, wouldn't appreciate that recommendation coming out before they, 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 they see it. So anyway, we'll work with you on that.
Two last comments, Sue, on that. NACO is the National Association of County Officials. And it's, most of the county commissioners get together once a year and have a convention and decide on some things we can all agree on, et cetera. One of the issues we're fighting right now related to bonds being extensive, there was actually a lawsuit in Colorado, I believe. But they were, they were actually able to prove that indeed bonds are unconstitutional, et cetera, the way they were using it there. So you're not alone in your concern about that. It has been an issue of our NACO association for some time. And the last thing, uh, DHHS, our state, you know, Department of Health and Human Services, they've asked me to serve on that board as if I have the time. Uh, as the county commissioner, you know, sort of making sure they're doing the right thing. But they haven't approved my selection yet, uh, Ms. Jones. But they have my name in the, in, in the hat. They go on that board and make sure they're doing the right thing. And I'll tell you why they're doing that, I think. I was very critical of how I saw some inmates in the jail pulling off pieces of the wall, chewing them up when I went over there years ago because they had mental conditions. And they were doing it to excre- excrete them so they can go to the hospital and get out of that place. But it was a mental issue, not a criminal issue. And so I raised a little sand about that. And now they put on this criminal justice, something. Anyway, Dudley, one of you and I meet every now and then, you know, with Cooper. Uh, but your concerns, I want you to know that you're not isolating your concerns. You're not isolating your concerns. That's my whole point. Okay? And thank you again for, you know, your, your, your detailed concerns. And we'll do our part to address each one of them as Dudley said. And I hope this was helpful to each one of you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Later, everybody.
Take care now. And thank you, Mr. Russell, for handling things for us. And thank you, Mr. Russell, for handling things for us on a technical end too, as always. Thank you, Dudley.